Good afternoon, everyone. The time is now 5:33 and we are going to go ahead and get this meeting started. It's been duly posted as required by state law. We are going to start with the invocation. And Commissioner Kinsley is not able to be here with us today, so I'd ask Assistant City Manager Josh Ramírez to lead us in our invocation.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to begin with reading from Matthew, Chapter 7, verse 7 and 8. "Ask and it will be given to you; seek and you will find; knock and the door will be opened to you. For everyone who asks receives, and the one who seeks finds, and the one who knocks, the door will be opened." Let us begin them of the Father, the Son, and Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your wisdom and guidance. As we begin this meeting, help us to engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a city, and nurture the bonds of our community. We thank you for those that are here with us, and we ask that you protect those that will be traveling during this Christmas holiday. We also ask that you guide our thoughts and actions to bring you glory, strengthen us, and fill us with your peace. May we love and serve each other, as Jesus has shown us, especially as we near the celebration of his birth. Fill us with the Holy Spirit to do your good, to do your good work for the citizens of this great city. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Now, the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, united in the visible, liberty, peace, and justice.
We'll now read the conflict of interest. Mark?
Yes, Mayor. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 No.
Moving on to citizen communication. Amanda, do we have anyone signed up for citizen communication?
Yes, ma'am. We have six persons that signed up for citizens' communication. The first one is Edna Gloria. Her address is 23892 Sundance Circle. The topic is HEB tennis center pro contract, and she would like to read a statement in regards to the current pro. So is she here?
Hello, Ms. Gloria?
Yes.
If you can just restate your name and district, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Edna Gloria, and I'm not sure what district I belong to.
Okay. Just your address.
23892 Sundance Circle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, my name is Azastérez Edna Gloria, and I have with me my daughter Alexis Tejes. My daughter Alexis has been part of the Harlingen tennis community since the early age of five years old. When we went to the HEB tennis center to ask for information for tennis lessons, we met Coach Dawn and Coach Jacob and started with her tennis instructions. She is 15 years old now, and she made it as a varsity for her -- sorry, I'm so nervous. She made it as varsity as freshman, and she is proud of the -- member of the Harlingen High School varsity tennis team. For the past 10 years, my daughter and I witnessed this community to be uninclusive, only for kids to be able to excel and gain skills, otherwise they will not be able to acquire outside the HEB tennis center with the guidance of Coach Dawn. The guide and encouragement we received from Coach Dawn have had a positive impact in her life, especially in our life, especially in my daughters. I have no doubt Coach Dawn will continue to guide and encourage the kids of our community to strive to be the best person and that they can be, as well as the best tennis player, especially now that we have a pro shop up and running. My daughter attended several tournaments hosted by Coach Dawn over the years with no problems. When Coach Dawn stopped running the tournaments, Alexis felt that there was a lot of issues with the way the tournaments have been handled, and she does not feel comfortable participating anymore due to the changes on the tournaments. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next one is Jacob Worrell. Address 802 East Flynn Avenue, and the topic is HEB tennis center. And I guess I need to read his statement. He's not here. Okay. So I'm going to tie myself, Mayor. It's a pretty long one, but I'm going to try. It says, "I met Dawn in 2010 when I first began coaching with him. Since that summer, I have worked with Dawn at HEB tennis center every year in every capacity. Before coming and an HCISD teacher in 2017, I was at the tennis center seven days a week taking court fees and assisting Dawn with a shop trailer that we had at the time, as well as teaching private lessons and clinics. Since becoming a teacher, I continue to teach him play tennis at the tennis center after school and on weekends each week. I was lucky enough to play college tennis, but began owning what I learned there with the teaching opportunities Dawn gave me and began observing as much information as possible from his experience. He's always willing to share his opinion on techniques and strategies with his players and with any adult willing to ask. The level the players attain by training with any current coach at HEB tennis center is due to Dawn, and it is spread outside of more than just Harlingen. Players outside of Harlingen come to train here due to the results they've seen. I'd like to see Dawn grow the tournaments again now that there is an equal pro shop. Multiple tournaments were denied before due to a lack of bathrooms, not a lack of effort. Even working out of a trailer, the tournaments would amass 120 players and more. This would compare to the tournaments now that have closer to 50 players in attendance without Dawn directing. Before, he would need to use multiple sites, including both high school and Victor Park in addition to HEB tennis center. Even with this large numbers, there were no complaints filed against the tournament other than a lack of bathroom access at the tennis center and more seating shaded areas needed for viewing matches. Dawn and I received complaints from recent tournaments, as all tournaments have whether people want to admit it or not, but we assist in getting more information and resolving them without it needing to be reported. That is the atmosphere we need at the tennis center, again, is adults trying to work together to support the sport and our community. I am always willing to sit and speak with anyone on the subject as long as it's outside of school hours, but I reach the word limit for statements. Thank you."
Thank you, Amanda.
Next one, Mayor.
Next, we have John Ortega, and he also -- is that correct? Is there a John Ortega here?
Yes.
To speak? I was going to give you a minute so you could drink some water.
That was a long one here. Okay. Here we go, Mayor.
Okay. If you want to go ahead and read his -- go ahead and read the comment.
"Good evening, city officials. As the parent of a young tennis athlete and a new player myself, I would like to make it known my appreciation for knowledge, experience, and commitment Coach Dawn has provided our community. We have been a part of the HEB tennis community for going on four years now. We were there when the office was a double-wide then storage container, and now the wonderful tennis center we have. We have seen it grow and improve under Coach Dawn's leadership. My son, my wife, and myself have participated in many lessons, youth clinics, and summer camps provided by Coach Dawn, all at affordable cost and sometimes free for the community. Thanks to his unwavering passion for this sport to help the youth of the Harlingen and neighboring cities, my 10-year-old son and many other young athletes have grown a love for this incredible sport. We have grown to become a family. In addition with the incredible coaching provided and many hours of hard work, my son and many other youth players have been able to compete regularly all over the state, proudly representing our city. In the future, I would hope we continue to keep Coach Dawn in our community as our tennis pro as he continues to advocate for the youth of the tennis community. Thank you."
Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Sarah Heffley. I believe she's present. Is that right?
Okay. Would like to be called. Okay, so I'm going to call her.
Okay.
Hello, Mrs. Heffley. This is Amanda Lisondo with the City of Harlingen, City Secretary, and you submitted a request to a comment, I mean, a public information, not a public information, but public comments. And I'm going to go ahead and put you on the clock for three minutes, and you may start right now.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sarah Heffley. I have been playing at those tennis courts and a member of the tennis community and family since Dawn had started back in '96. So I would say I'm probably one of the oldest players, probably than anybody that's there speaking at the moment.
Hello?
Yes. My son is a freshman varsity for Harlingen High School now. My youngest, who is eight, also plays tennis and also is in the coaching of Dawn as well with a lot of other students that, you know, like to call me mom as well. I have taken my son out of USTA tournaments due to the fact that issues that have arisen, I will not allow him to play because they are very poorly ran. They are very disorganized. Sometimes we don't know until the night of that schedules are changing. Some of the students are getting marks on not showing up at the correct time when they're not made aware of the situation. Another student's mom paid for two days of a USTA tournament, which is not pocket change. It's $58 for two days. It costs a lot of money for us to involve our children or have our children enjoy the fact that there are or is this new facility, which is amazing, and it's hard for us to be able to deal with this situation along with walking in and the shop being completely empty due to the other person that was working there taking all this stuff. Tennis is supposed to be for the children, and I strongly believe that, which is the reason my children are continuing in my footsteps along with the assistance of Coach Dawn to be helping a lot of the future generations of tennis players to achieve their ability and the want and having the fun in everything that should be tennis.
Is that it, Mrs. Heff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Okay. Gary Tipton? Is that the one you have?
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. No, he doesn't want to be called. So then I'm going to go and read that.
So who is it?
Gary Tipton.
Rosanna, are you supposed to speak for Gary?
Gary turned in a letter.
Okay.
It's supposed to be younger.
Okay.
Definitely can talk if that letter's on the bill, but I didn't send a letter. I know, and he's out there crying, but he wasn't physically there.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead and read the comments. Amanda, here.
"Good evening to everyone. I would like simply to extend my thanks and gratitude for improvements that have made have been made at the HEB tennis center in recent months. My child's growth as a tennis player has been accelerating, and he loves to spend as much time at the center as he possibly can. Coach Dawn has been a great mentor for him, and we feel very fortunate to have him in Harlingen. Our child's love of tennis continues to grow, as does his skill set. The more time he spends out at the center with Coach Dawn. Thank you for your attention, respectfully, Gary Tipton."
And there's one more, correct?
Yes. Laura Prado, 717 Town Lane Drive. And would you like to be called? Yes. Okay. Hello? This is Amanda Lisondo, City Secretary for the City of Harlingen. You filed a public comment form to speak, and I'm going to put you on the clock for three minutes, and I'll let you know when you can start, okay? I'm sorry, who are you again? I'm Amanda Lisondo, City Secretary for the City of Harlingen, and you submitted a public comment form to speak, but you want it to be called. No, I didn't. Who are you looking for? Laura Prado? No, you have the wrong number. This is actually my son's phone number. Okay. Thank you so much, ma'am. You have a good evening. Thank you. You too. Bye-bye.
Is that the number that's on the?
That's the number, but it's the son's phone number.
Okay. That's the number you called, the one on the?
The 4977948.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So that concludes our citizen communication. Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
I do want to take a moment to recognize Commissioner Julian Alvarez for joining us, and we welcome you to our commission meeting and hope to see you at future meetings as well. And now we're going to move on to the presentation of the awards.
So first, we have the Harlingen Saddle Cox. If you want to come on up and -- Okay. So this is a recognition award. The City of Harlingen congratulates and proudly presents this award to the Harlingen High School Saddle Cox Football Team, 2022 to 2023, and special recognitions to captains August Wilson, Desmond Fano, not here, Caleb Anaya, Ethan Garza, Esteban Morales, and Andrew Luna, and head coach Israel Gonzalez III. Caleb Anaya, is the first-team All-District Linebacker. Ethan Garza, Honorable Mention, All-District Titan. Andrew Luna, first-team All-District Linebacker. Esteban Morales, Offensive Lineman of the Year. And August Wilson, Honorable Mention, All-District Speaker. And so in recognition of your excellent athletic performance and sportsmanship in football competitions, we present to you this 21st day of December 2022, this recognition award, and obviously to the entire team, such as the boys, rink viewers, and athletes representing and so forth. So we all recommend you, and I'll ask Commissioner Betis to come down here, and all the other commissioners. And who else? All right. Thank you. Proud of all of your hard work.
Thank you very much. Good job, Betis. Appreciate it. Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
We did have scheduled awards for the Harlingen Cardinal Football Team and the Harlingen Cardinals Girl Volleyball Team. Unfortunately, the both the football team and the girls volleyball team weren't able to make it, and we hope to have them on our next commission meeting. Moving on to item number two, approval of minutes.
There's just one correction that I see on page 22 of the minutes, and this is more of a question, Amanda. On this one, it says on item 29, this is where it says the votes, right? So it says for Mayor Pro Temperes, Commissioners Morales and Lopez abstained, Commissioners Kinsley, and then opposed Commissioner Mezmar, and said motion carried 3-2. Wouldn't it be 3-1-1? Or is it just 3-1? Because no two people opposed it.
Okay. So then, yes, I would have to put that Commissioner Perez abstained.
There's Commissioner Kinsley abstained on this one.
Oh, that is correct, sir. Commissioner abstained, Commissioner Kinsley opposed, Commissioner Mezmar.
Yeah. And then just the number vote, 3-2, it would be 3-1.
3-1.
Perfect. Then I'm motion to approve the minutes, subject to that one change.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Thank you. And we have item number three, consent agenda items A through F, and I don't know if we had?
Commissioner, if we could pull three, or sorry, Mayor, if we could pull 3A?
Okay. So do you have a motion?
On 3A, Mark, this is the one where I'd send you the language.
Well, let's approve. Let's do.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, motion to approve the rest of the consent items.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Item number four, consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary construction plans and final plat for the proposed Paloma Ranch subdivision bearing a legal description of 33.91 acres of land, more or less out of blocks 1, 2, and 3. FZ Bishop subdivision of the south half of survey number 41, located along the east side of Paloma Lane, approximately 370 feet north of Garrett Road. The applicant here is more land surveying. Javier?
Mayor City Commissioners, if you remember, two months ago, a new subdivision development guide was adopted, and during the adoption, we established a policy that if the developer is proposing to widen the ditch as opposed to onsite detention, that it will be a recommendation from PNC, and you will be making the final decision. So this is the first subdivision under that new policy. So this is a subdivision proposed on Paloma Lane, about 300 feet north of, so this is Paloma Lane. This is Garrett Road. It's a large subdivision, and it has a ditch along the north side and the east side. Like I said, it's a large subdivision, 130 lots, and so this is the proposed dedication of right-of-way to the Drainage District number 5. And so this is where the ditch will be widened to comply with our drainage requirements. That's a photo of the property, and that's the photo of the ditch. So it's kind of further that way. So this, that will be widened this way to accommodate the requirements for a 50-year storm. So this went, staff recommends approval, the city engineer is recommending approval, and all the departments are recommending approval. There's a list of conditions in your packet. This went before the planning and zoning commission on December 14, and they also recommended approval. Three votes in favor and one abstention. So staff is recommending approval, and PNC is also recommending approval to this subdivision.
Did we get anything in writing from GD5 that there were? I know that there's language in the plat based on the P and Z minutes, but did we get something with their letterhead saying that they approved this?
Yes. We didn't submit to the city, but we do have it. They approved it at their meeting the day before PNC, and so we do have their letter from their district engineer and the board stating that it was approved at that meeting.
And what is it that they've exactly got to prove? That they're just, they're the ones going to be maintaining the ditch?
So they approved the same drainage report that Luis reviewed. They approved to widen the ditch for the detention, and they approved the dedication of the right-of-way that they will be maintaining. Yes, sir.
So that we're giving you the right-of-way, so that way District, Cameron County District 5 is going to be maintaining the ditch, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I had a question for Luis. Luis, why is it, I'm wondering, because I know our guidelines require onsite detention, but then they're asking for a variance, and I know, like, you know, each subdivision, it's on a case-by-case basis. But why do you feel that on this specific, I care about it because it's in my district. So from what you know of the area, first off, from what you know of the area, is that area prone to flooding, the Paloma Ranch area?
The drainage report shows that the ditch is capable of handling storm rain events of 100-year, years of more or more, and the subdivision will be constructed with the finished floor elevation higher than the 100-year elevation. And so that told us that the ditch is capable of handling the additional flows from the subdivision. And being that, well, it kind of surrounds two sides of the proposed development. So that, with that basis, we said this is a good subdivision that would allow for the ditch to be widened and not do an onsite detention.
So I just want to clarify there. So there's no onsite detention here whatsoever, correct?
That is correct. Initially, they had proposed an onsite detention, but we --
Why did that change?
What was that? I'm sorry?
Oh, no, continue. I'm sorry. I was going to ask, why did that change?
It changed because of the right-of-way acquisition and because of the lots being, if we left the pond, we wouldn't be able to have more lots, and then the, as I said, the drainage report showed that the ditch is capable of handling -- And that's the photo of the ditch, so it's kind of further that way. So this, that will be widened this way to accommodate the requirements for a 50-year storm. So this went, staff recommends approval, the city engineer is recommending approval, and all the departments are recommending approval, there's a list of conditions in your packet. This went before the planning and zoning commission on December 14, and they also recommended approval. Three votes in favor and one abstention. So staff is recommending approval and PNC is also recommending approval to this subdivision.
Did we get anything in writing from DD5 that there were? I know that there's language in the plat based on the P and Z minutes, but did we get something with their letterhead saying that they approved this?
Yes.
We didn't submit to the city, but we do have it. They approved it at their meeting the day before PNC. And so we do have their letter from their district engineer and the board stating that it was approved at that meeting.
And what is it that they've exactly got to prove that they're just, they're the ones going to be maintaining the ditch?
So they approved the same drainage report that Luis reviewed. They approved to widen the ditch for the detention. And they approved the dedication of the right of way that they would be maintaining, yes, sir.
So that we're giving you the right of way, so that way District, Cameron County District Five is going to be maintaining the ditch, correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay, and I had a question for Luis. Luis, why is it, I'm wondering, because I know our guidelines require onsite detention, but then they're asking for a variance. And I know like, you know, each subdivision, it's on a case by case basis. But why do you feel that on this specific, I care about it because it's my, it's in my district. So from what you know of the area, first off, from what you know of the area, is that area prone to flooding? The Paloma Ranch area?
The drainage report shows that the ditch is capable of handling a storm rain events of 100-year, years of more or more. And the subdivision will be constructed with the finished floor elevation higher than the 100-year elevation. And so that told us that the ditch is capable of handling the additional flows from the subdivision. And being that, well, it kind of surrounds two sides of the proposed development. So that, with that basis, we said this is a good subdivision that would allow for the ditch to be widened and not do an onsite detention.
So I just want to clarify there, so there's no onsite detention here whatsoever, correct?
That is correct. Initially, they had proposed an onsite detention, but.
Why did that change?
What was that, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, I can see, I'm sorry. I was gonna ask, why did that change?
It changed because of the right of way acquisition and because of the lots being. If we left the pond, we wouldn't be able to have more lots. And then the, as I said, the drainage report showed that the ditch is capable of handling not only the additional flows, but it's capable and it's big enough to handle storm events of 100 years or more.
So in layman terms, so that way the developer can make more money with more lots?
Yes, and also the city is benefit by not having to maintain another pond.
If, no, I agree with that, that's a good thing. We don't have to have a homeowners association or one doesn't have to be, you know, built into that. But I was gonna ask, if it does flood, who's going to be responsible for the flooding?
That's a great question.
Oh, good, Dustin, you gotta get that.
No, I mean, with everything, I mean, more land surveying carries a liability policy. And I would say if some flooded, the first person that would probably be held accountable would be us.
The thing is, I know in the plat, it always, because I was reading about this because it's in my district. So I know in the plat, it usually says that the developer is actually held responsible for any type of flooding in that area. But from what I've learned, that's rarely ever actually the case. Because usually when there's some type of flooding, it's always the city that ends up having to use taxpayer dollar to rectify the situation. And I think Spanish Acres, is that the one that was flooding as well, Gabe? I'm not sure that we had to spend some money on it and it was supposed to be developer, but it wasn't, we spent money. I'm not sure if that's the correct subdivision.
There's a few subdivisions that have flooded out. Those were, I know Hick Hills is one of them. So we're spending our funds to try to get that water out faster.
So in any of those, in even any of those subdivisions that flooded, has a developer actually ever been held responsible like it says in the plat?
That would be the residents having a civil matter against the developer, so it wouldn't involve the city. So we wouldn't be aware if there was a lawsuit filed against the developer.
But generally, like from what you've heard, it's never been the case?
I've never heard of that happening before.
Because that's my thing, because we put it on the paper that developer is responsible for. But when it comes down to an actuality and that never actually happens, and we're always spending taxpayer money to fix something that could have been, could have possibly been avoided in the beginning. And it seems like we're always doing this. I know we did the variance, because how many, because I know this is the second subdivision in my district that you're doing that's requiring a variance. Remind me, Dustin, what was that subdivision, the one it's on, Wilson, that we took a tour, myself and Norma?
So that variance was to allow 26 lots instead of 25 lots.
So you didn't widen, but you did widen the ditch on that one or no?
We did, but at that time, the variance wasn't required for that. It was just approved through staff.
But that one didn't have any onsite detention either, right?
Correct, right, we widened it on that one.
Okay, because I know a lot of the issues, a couple of months ago, was a lot of the, my constituents in that area were worried about the flooding in that area. And I'm just trying to, I'm worried that this is going to be another one of those areas. Because I know that Paloma, I pass by that area every day. Because I drop off my son at Vela and I drive through and I see them working on it, you know, and I know it's not done yet. But I noticed the last rain that we got, you know how they have that drain on the sides? So it was uneven, there were some areas where there was water. I mean, it was just looked very uneven, but I know they're not done yet. So my thing is, I'm just worried because I know that's a very heavily trafficked area. Because of Garrett Road and people drop off, like myself, drop off their kids.
So I believe the one you're talking about is on the corner of Palm Old Park and Garrett, just south of.
Okay, so that's not the one?
No, this is a different one, Paloma's, I think, two or three.
Yeah, Paloma's on this side.
Right, Paloma's closer to the main part of town.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the one just south of Vela, right there at the intersection, that one, this is not that one.
Okay, yeah, I was confused. So why is it that you, so I'm just, the thing is, the reason I asked for the commission to put this on there because I'm always worried when we don't put onsite detention. Because I know that's a requirement and in the past, I know that's always been used as a as an excuse not to use onsite detention, we always have these variances. And I understand like case by case basis, but what I'm worried about, because if it does flood, they're gonna, they're not gonna come to you. And they're not gonna come to you, Dustin, they're not gonna come to your dad at the Cameron County Drainage District. What they're gonna do is they're gonna come to me. And they're gonna come to me, they're gonna complain to me. And I want to be able to say that we know for a fact, not for a fact, because that's never possible, but we know with the best of our knowledge that by doing the, widening the ditch, we're not going to add to the flooding problem in that area. Can you say that with confidence, Luis?
So I'll say that in last week, in the planning and zoning commission, and analysis or an analogy was used to describe this ditch or to describe the, how the ditch would work, right? It was said that, you know, you have a highway and then you have more cars coming in. You have to have like a buffer, right? If we use this analogy, this ditch is a minor material or a major collector. It's not a local road. If we, if it was a local road, we would say, you know what, you need to detain. But it's not. If we keep using the analogy as a traffic volume, then a major collector or a minor material will handle the additional traffic or the additional flow. So I would say that it would contain a 100-year event, but past that, maybe 125, maybe a 500-year event. I don't think any facility or ditch in the city would handle that.
We've already made that determination that we can't handle a 500-year storm.
No, I know 500, yeah, I was.
And I'm just gonna interject, but onsite detention wouldn't handle it either.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, so I think we're kind of, we're speaking in hypotheticals, but realistically, you review this, Luis? And you feel confident that this would, this is a, is sufficient for a 100-year storm? And we've made these policies changes in our, which is why I believe this came before us now and had, you know, previously was onsite detention. That's changed because we've changed our policy. And this fits within that. And if I remember correctly, when we were discussing this, these changes in the policy that we were implementing for developers, the first person to decide on whether this was going to be allowed would be you, right?
Correct, and.
And that's how we came up with this decision based on your recommendation?
Yes, and we, you know, we have places where a detention pond is suitable because there's no ditch and the storage system adjacent to the developed land is just limited. But that's not the case here.
Okay, I got a couple.
So Dustin, we're gonna be holding you accountable, but I feel confident that you're going to. And we talked about this when Commissioner Beddoes and I went to go look at another development. And I know that there's been issues in Harlingen where there's been flooding and we discussed that. But you've never, you've not been on any of those developments, is that correct?
Correct, and so we, DD5 has a hydraulic model which identifies that 100-year water surface in that ditch. We use that, we use that for our analysis. We also compared it to the high water marks that we shot in that ditch during the 2019 flood. And the finished floors of this are set roughly five years above the 100-year storm. And I believe it's three and a half to four feet above the 2019 water. So can the ditch or any of the storm sewers and the ponds, like I said, handle a 500-year storm? No, but we feel confident that the finished floors of the houses are all set substantially above that to protect them, yes, ma'am.
Because we want our residents to feel confident in the purchase of their home, especially their dream home, a new home, and that they can rest assured that we've done everything that we can do within the city of Harlingen and also on the development side. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
So every home is going to be above the crown of the street, correct?
Absolutely, yes, sir. So all of our plats, we set a hard elevation, not just 18 inches above, because you know, the curb's going up and down. We always set a hard elevation that every house has to be at that level with a minimum of 24. So at the high point of the road, maybe you're 24. At the low point by the inlet, maybe you're 30, maybe you're 40 inches above it. But we set a hard elevation for every single house in this subdivision.
Okay, the other question I have, I don't know if it's for you, Luis, or Javier. Who's contacting the state to make sure that this subdivision that's being made, constructed, will not fall under the FEMA flood plane? In other words, when people buy their home insurance and their flood insurance, they're not paying a premium because what the work you've done has reduced that potential flooding?
This is not a special flood hazard area, so they wouldn't be required to get flood insurance.
I understand that. Somewhere down the line on another project that we're gonna look at, there's a specific, and I'll read it to you once we get to that, could be on the next item, all right? But that's a concern. Okay, the concern is this, if I'm the homeowner and I'm dropping 200,000 on that home, all right? I don't want to pay extra on my home insurance because somebody failed to call Austin and say, listen, this is, this was a flood plain area at one point, now it isn't. We have a home and I want to pay a fair price for my insurance. That's what I'm trying to get to.
So this area is not in a FEMA designated flood zone, isn't currently and isn't planned to be. So a mortgage company would not require flood insurance on this property. If this was being developed in a FEMA designated flood zone, then you would be forced to buy it when you took out your mortgage and your rates would be high. And so when you closed on your home, you would have to get an elevation certificate, which would basically, it's a FEMA form and it tells FEMA, here's your minimum flood zone in this area. Your house is 18 inches, 12 inches, two feet above that flood zone. That form is what's going to dictate what your premium is. The higher you are above it, the lower your premiums are. And so at that time, so if this was a flood zone, two things could happen. Either the developer could raise the whole site and bring it out of the flood zone and do a letter of map revision, which would take all the houses out and no one would be required to get that insurance anymore. Or as you build each individual house and elevated it above that, each homeowner could do a letter of map amendment excluding that prop, that, just the structure, not the whole property, just that structure out of it. And their FEMA forms, engineers and surveyors can do them. So it would just depend, if this was a FEMA flood zone, if the developer wanted to do that upfront or if he was gonna build it and as the houses got elevated, let the homeowner do that. But on this property, it wouldn't be required either way because it's not in a FEMA designated flood zone.
Flood zone or not, regardless, I encourage everybody to have federal flood insurance because acts of God happen.
Javier and Luis, if you can just do me a favor, make sure in the future, and Cody, Dustin, excuse me, if you could send us the paperwork that you got from DD5 and if we can from now on include that in our file, that we got the letter from them. That's it, thank you guys very much, I appreciate all the work. I'll make the motion to approve the variance and this item.
It cannot be conditioned upon including the.
No, they'll just do it.
This is not a variance, it's just approval of the subdivision.
Excuse me, I apologize, then approval of the subdivision.
Second.
Was there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Post.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Morales, I didn't.
I for it.
Okay. Motion passes, thank you. Item number five, consideration and possible action to approve a variance to the subdivision ordinance to allow one instead of two required entrances and a 50-foot right of way for the first 114.45 feet instead of the required 60 feet for a local street north of East Taft Avenue for the proposed Coakley Estate Phase Two subdivision located on the north side of Taft Avenue, approximately 285 feet east of Bush Street. Applicant is more land surveying. Javier?
Now, this one is a variance. And so this is a subdivision, Coakley Estates by Coakley Middle School. And this is a subdivision that was initially processed in 1994. So this is what we got in 94. Four phases, but only phase one and phase three got done. So the other phases, they were not developed, but they have vested rights. Back then, the city only had drainage requirements for a five-year storm. So in the original layouts, there's no drainage detention or anything like that. The developer for this subdivision, he would like to do the right thing and provide drainage detention, which will be this area. So he's losing, he's willing to lose lots to do the right thing and provide drainage. But he will lose the vested rights since he's changing the layout of the subdivision. But he's needing a variance on the second entrance requirement. For when this was master planned, back then, only one entrance was required for this phase. So the only, only this entrance was provided for back then. So there's no other way to ask to provide a second entrance. There are some vacant lots, one here and one here and another one here, that the developer tried to purchase, but the owners will not sell. So the developer did try to provide a second entrance, but due to the circumstances, he was not able. So that's a variance number one, to allow one entrance instead of two. And then from phase one, only 50 feet of right of way was dedicated here. And so he's asking for, to allow the 50 feet instead of 60 feet of right of way. The rest of the street from here to here will be the 60 feet of right of way. So those are the two variances, to allow the one entrance and to allow the lesser right of way requirement. The street will be 37 feet back to back, all the way through. It's just here, it will be, the right of way will be a little bit narrower. And that's the proposed entrance for the subdivision. That's the phase one recorded plat that shows it's only 50 feet of right of way to work with. The letter from the subdivision engineer, email from the realtor that he tried to purchase the lot, the vacant lots for a second entrance. Staff recommends approval due to the circumstances, the special circumstances. And planning and zoning commission also recommended approval unanimously to the variance requests.
Thank you, Javier. Is there any questions from the commission?
That inlet you, where the picture's at, where you're gonna widen the street? There you go. That inlet, is that gonna be relocated because you're gonna have the street going through there?
The curving thing?
Correct.
No, the radius of the new street will tie in just adjacent to that. So it won't have to be relocated or adjusted. From the topo in the design, it'll, it ties in right into that, that curving.
All of that water that's gonna be, once it rains, is that going straight to the Arroyo?
Yes, sir. So that inlet ties in, in the middle of Taft, there's a, I believe it's a 60-inch storm drain that then goes through a 10-by-10 box to the Arroyo, right by the Taft, to the tracks and to the Arroyo.
How is this going to impact the future repaving of the street?
Of Taft?
Yes.
We shouldn't be touching anything on Taft, any of the asphalt or maybe on that.
I'm referring to the underneath, I'm sorry. The drainage inlets, outlets, anything underneath, you're gonna have to tie that.
So, sorry, when the original phase was done, all of the services and connections were stubbed out and prepared. So we aren't having to go into that road for anything. The sewer's stubbed out, the water's stubbed out, and there's that inlet and then there's a manhole, a storm manhole that's already stubbed out into that inlet. So we, everything was prepped and ready for this phase. So we shouldn't be having to do anything in the right of way of Taft Road.
Okay. Right, I have a, give me a second here. Javier? In reference to this being back, started back in 1994, how many other developments are out there that have vested rights that are grandfathered?
I know there's some on Ed Carey that got preliminary plat approval and the infrastructure commenced. I think there's some water and, so I think there's some, I know of some on South Ed Carey. I think that's it.
Can we get a list of those?
I'm curious, what does that have to do with this development?
This development started back in 1984, 94, right?
Okay.
Which is what, 30, close to 30 years. Thanks to the developer or someone, we're gonna be able to have some drainage out of there because they were grandfathered, which means they didn't have to adhere to any drainage structures to alleviate that, that's why I'm asking.
But with this subdivision, they are proposing a drainage pond right there.
Correct, they are proposing.
Yes.
But push, if push comes to shove, they would have been grandfathered to where they would not have to do that.
I mean, that's, that's why we're here today, because this is what they want to do.
No, I understand, but. But, am I wrong in saying this? Thanks to them saying, them could be, Dustin could be somebody else, they're going to do at this drainage part of it. Otherwise, they could say, forget you guys, we're grandfathered in, we don't have to do it. My next question to try to answer, Commissioner Miss Mars, is how many of these other projects do we have out there within the city that are grandfathers that they could basically say, hey, you know what, we got this twenty years ago, we don't have to adhere to any of your drainage?
I know, I know of one on South Ed Carey that is like that.
Okay.
Commissioner, they can get that for you, but it's going to take, it's going to take some time for them to go back through the subdivisions and figure out, so just give them some time, but they'll get you.
I'm not asking for this tomorrow. But, yeah, it's going to hit us sooner or later. All right? So, let's try to be a little proactive is what I'm trying to get to.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion, discussion on item five? No? Is there a motion?
Submove.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Post? Motion carries. Thank you, Javier.
Item six, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter Eighteen, master fee scheduled to add daily junior fees for golf and group rates at the Tony Butler Golf Course and granting the ability for the general manager to designate one daily special each month on special days. Jeff?
Hello. Thank you all. The Golf Course Advisory Board, the staff and myself come to you asking to approve some of these. The first one would be junior rates. Currently, we do not have a junior rate, we have a monthly junior rate that's twenty-six dollars for the month, that's unlimited green fees. What we're asking for is seventeen dollars, it's a green fee and cart for junior, which our normal rate is thirty-six dollars. That's for eighteen holes, if they're walking, ten dollars. If they're playing nine holes, we're asking, that'd be thirteen dollars for a green fee and cart. Of course, adult would be running the carts. And walking would be seven dollars. And this is after twelve o'clock, so that they're not kind of interfering with our majority of our early morning play, but in the afternoon play, that it does reduce the rates for the future golfers. The second fee we're doing, that we're asking for, is a group rate that's based on, it's basically roughly five percent decrease, a discount for every twenty-five players you bring. So, zero twenty-four would be a regular rate at thirty-six dollars for a green fee and cart. Twenty-five to forty-nine players would be two dollars, thirty-four dollars. If you bring fifty to seventy-four players, you pay thirty-two dollars per player. Up to seventy-five to ninety-nine, it'd be thirty dollars. And a hundred players and plus, you'd be paying twenty-eight dollars. So, that we kind of would be discounting the rate if you bring more people, which is something that you see kind of across the valley. The third rate, we looked, we've been talking about this for several years, is about the special rates. We looked at giving specials on holidays, on certain holidays and on certain instances. The day, the, what we looked at, we listed three or four pages of holidays and special times to ask for a special rate on that, such as Mother Day, Veterans Day, Halloween, days like this, not days when we're super busy like Memorial Day or Memorial Day. But days when we're not busy. What we came up with and decided it would just be easier to do this once a month, it doesn't necessarily going to happen every month, but that we have the ability to do a special rate and we have a special occasion coming up. This Saturday would be a very good time to have a special rate since the weather's going to be thirty-eight degrees. So, this would be something where we declare, where we're lowering the discount, discounting the rate for just that day. And it's just for one month, one time a month at the most, is what we're asking for. This fills in for our special rates or holiday rates that we would do normally.
Wonderful. And last time you said these rates are still significantly lower than the other courses in town, right?
Correct, yes.
Any questions?
None here.
All right. Is there a motion?
Great job.
Thank you.
Great job.
We're just trying to be competitive with the rest and offer more options.
Yeah, no, definitely. I agree.
It's appreciated.
Doing great work out there, we appreciate you.
The bridge is in now too.
So, did you, do we have a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor.
Thank you.
Item seven, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to award task orders under RFQ twenty-twenty-one dash fourteen, professional engineering services for the City of Harlingen American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one, drainage improvement projects to T E D S I Infrastructure Group for the design of the Fifth and Seventh Storm Sewer Improvement Systems Twenty-One Project and Half Associates for the design of Lozano Street Detention Pond and System Improvements Phase One Project. Luis?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Luis Vargas and I'm the city engineer. Last year, on June, the city issued a package of requests for qualifications or an RFQ where nine engineering firms were selected and they were awarded at master services The, those nine firms, they were tasked to provide proposals for task orders for the design of projects identified in the two thousand and eight drainage master plan. All nine firms have been assigned already task orders. Of those nine firms, T E C I and Half, Half completed their first task order. The first task order for T E C I was the Hickhill Culvert, which it's in the process, it's in the bid phase, or well, yeah, it's in the bid analysis phase, we're taking it to construction. The first task order for Half was the Lozano Study, or the Lozano Detention, Regional Detention or Detention Facility. And this agenda item six seeks city commission approval for the second task order for T E C I and for Half. For T E C I, we have the Fifth and Seventh Storm Sewer System Improvements that comes from the two thousand and eight study, and that is system twenty-one. For that project, there's a construction estimate of three million one hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and forty-nine. And the design fees are, in the agenda item, it says four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, it really is four hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and two, as you would see in the proposal. So, there's a mistake in the agenda item, it should be four hundred and thirty-three thousand. For Half Associates, we have the design of Phase One of their study. The construction of that project is, the estimate is one million two hundred and fifty thousand and the design fee is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand and one hundred and fifty. Future agenda items would ask for additional task orders for the other engineering firms, the other seven firms. But all of them are currently working on a task order. So, staff recommends approval and happy to answer any questions.
Luis, I have a, I do have a question. These nine firms, when, when were these assigned? Did you say two thousand and eight? Is that, did I hear correctly?
Well, the two thousand and eight was when the drainage master plan was completed. The drainage master plan comes from civil systems engineering and that was completed in two thousand and eight. Last year, on two thousand and twenty-one, in June, we, the city issued a RFQ request for qualification and the engineering firms submitted their qualifications and we selected nine firms based on their score, which in city commission, it was decided that whoever had a ninety or more in their score, they were selected to provide engineering services to the city.
I think there were a total of eleven firms that submitted a proposal. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
But this was in two thousand and twenty-one?
Correct, yes.
Right, okay. And this two thousand and eight comprehensive plan has been updated since?
It's in the process of being updated. The same company, C S E, is currently doing a study that will be completed in two thousand and twenty-four. That comes from the Fifth or the Flood Insurance Fund Grant. That's, yeah. C S E is also part of the nine firms, by the way. They also have a task order.
Okay. I was just, I, I, I didn't hear correctly, but I, that was what I, I thought we were working with them since two thousand and eight. But two thousand and twenty-one is when they were selected, nine out of the eleven were selected with above ninety score. Sounds, okay, sounds great. I don't have any other, any other questions.
I do. Would, because would it be possible, like are these firms that have these task orders, are they, are any of them local or no?
Yes. Some of them are. Most of them.
Most, okay, good.
Yeah.
Good. But would it also be, I'm just wondering, like would it be possible to somehow, because I know you said we approved it last year, that was in June, I was like, I barely got on, Frank had just got on. But I know, like now we have an entire new group, you know, new engineer, new city managers and also new city commissioners. So, would it be possible to like do that again, like where we can take out for qualifications or would that, would that be too burdensome or?
Yeah, we can do that, Commissioner. The only reason we did it this way was to, because we had a lot of ARPA funds and we knew we were going to have lots of engineering work, made it faster to actually award them and get them out on the field.
So, for future work, could we do that or no?
We can do that again. You can also do it for every single one, but I don't recommend that because...
That would slow down things down, no?
Yeah, yes, sir. So, but we can go out again for...
It's drainage, don't slow it down.
Yes. And I think I heard you say that these, all of them have already been tasked with a project, right? So, we don't want to change, change that up. I agree with Commissioner Bettis and that was kind of the reason why I asked the question. But moving forward, maybe we can, we can work on ensuring that we open that up, but we don't want to slow down.
And every time there's an award mayor, we come to the commission for, and sometimes, we don't always accept the fee they provide. Sometimes you've asked someone to actually reduce the rate or negotiate the rate and so we have.
So, how much, like, like, again, what we're doing is good, but, so how much longer would we be using these firms? Like before we go out? Like, do you have an estimate, like for another year or so?
As long as the commission wants to use them, we can go out for next year. We can start that process for any project awarded in two thousand and twenty-three. We can actually go out for RFQs again.
I suggest we start looking at doing it maybe in the summertime. This is, the purchasing process or the bidding process is something I've been interested in, to make sure that we get the best firms possible, specifically on the Fifth and Seventh Street project. They, and I've told you guys the story ad nauseam, they had done the same project on Eleventh Street, right where I live, and the firm that did that, there was a bunch of issues. Therefore, I'll look at it, but I think we should continue moving on.
Well, we can, we can do that for any project awarded in two thousand and twenty-three, go out for, it's going to take a couple of months, a few months actually, but we can start the process now.
So, what I think would be helpful if we could, the commission could have a list of those projects and who they're assigned to, so we know what's coming up in the next meetings, because we'll be having these discussions as these, as we move forward with it's already been assigned and then we can talk about moving forward, how we can open that up and...
What we can, do Mayor, if I may, is give you a list of the projects that have already been awarded?
Yes.
That are currently being worked on right now and then the future projects that we see coming up, aside from these two, if they get awarded tonight.
Correct. And then, at a later point, I think I'd like to, and I think I spoke with Luis about this before, or maybe, I'm not, I don't, maybe it was at the developer meeting, I'm not sure, but we can talk about the scoring process and how we do that and ensure that we're making, we're not having any issues like individuals should have, if there's been problems with the city before, we'd like to have that information. And I don't know, who's, who was in the group for the scoring of these nine? I know I wasn't here, so...
I, I don't know, Mayor, I was not part of that review process at the time.
Yeah, I wasn't part either, but my predecessor and...
So, that's what I'm thinking, that no one in this room was part of that, that process. So, I'd like to revisit that and see how we can improve it.
I think the only reason we kept it is out of expediency, trying to keep...
Sure.
The projects going, but it's time that we could do that again.
Okay, wonderful. We do want to move forward, we want to tackle the issues, but we can work on that.
Okay, I have one last question. The, can you give me an estimate? I know, just on the Hickhill project, when do you think that would be complete? Because then you say it was on the bidding analysis process?
Yes. Yeah, we received bids already. The construction time, you...
Yeah, like when would it, like, can you give me an estimate, like when it would be done? I know I'm asking a lot, just like...
In the next four, six months.
Okay.
For sure.
So, before next hurricane season.
Okay. Yeah, because this is one that was supposed to be done earlier, but I'm not going to get into it, but yes, okay, thank you.
Just a question, on the Fifth and Seventh Street Sewer System Improvements, are you guys going to be using those big box drains?
Yes. The, it depends on what the HNA or hydraulic or hydrologic study shows, but I could tell you that, yes, it would probably warrant boxes. In the estimate, I don't think I saw boxes, but I could, I could look at it quickly. So, the biggest pipe it has is a forty-two inch pipe, but if it requires after the study is done, a box, then of course, definitely.
Thank you. Have you reached out to C S E, Civil Service Engineering? Because they're doing the same hydraulic study, okay? They did this in two thousand and oh-eight or whenever it was, then we selected them, you guys were part of it?
Yes. So, to save time and money, we actually shared the modeling and the report and all the data from two thousand and eight to all these nine firms that needed it.
Okay. That's fine. Perfect. But they've been doing some work for us for, I don't know, nine months or so? Where do they stand with that updated work with projects that are being done?
So, they are currently recollecting all the data from all the stakeholders and surveying the whole city and topographically and in the drainage system. So, they're not there as far as the modeling goes, but we are providing all the input that we're doing right now with all these other companies to C S E so that they incorporate all these efforts to the two thousand and twenty-four master plan.
One of the things I don't like here is we're going to pay out thirty-one thousand two hundred and forty-six bucks because we're going to, this T E C I, T E C I is going to redo hydraulic study, okay? So, it's like we're duplicating what was done and what is being done right now. So, that's why we need to verify and make sure that they haven't gotten to this portion, otherwise we're, and this is just one example. I don't know what else is out there that's, that we're paying twice for.
The, I guess the two thousand and eight and the upcoming two thousand and twenty-four drainage master plan will have a general overview of how the drainage behaves in the city, but once you go into a sub watershed, the engineer that designs that system would want to do its own modeling and report.
Luis, I have a question. Was the two thousand and eight study based on a ten-year drainage retention?
I believe it was, it was five and ten.
Five and ten.
Yeah.
And the fact that we have a fifty-year now, is that going to make a difference?
Yes, yes. C S E is aware of our current standards and we share that with them. And since we're talking about five, ten-year events, just to put in comparison, the Jefferson Stormwater Drainage Improvements has an outfall of ten by ten, no, seven by ten box culvert, a duct, and that system was designed with a five-year event. And that's almost the width of the lane, right? So, if we say, why don't we design it to a twenty-five year, it would be probably the width of the street or more. It wouldn't be feasible. As the city grows, we can look at higher standards, but in downtown, where you have so much right-of-way, you're not able to put a hundred-year box culvert because you don't have the space.
These funds, a couple of weeks ago, we pulled one point three from the...
These funds, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we, we pulled one point three from the, uh, Harlingen Water Works. Is that, is that this, uh, this is just for the Lozano Park, correct?
Yes, that's, that's where that's coming from.
And this other, uh, three point one plus four hundred thousand?
No, that's not coming from there.
That's not, we're not gonna touch that anymore for now?
Well, no, the, the, the only drainage project that was taken from Water Works was the Lozano, uh, pond, retention pond. That's it, that's the only drainage project we took out of there. All the others that we have are coming from funds that were, the city kept directly for drainage within the city. We, we did make one exception for the, uh, the, the pumps at the Arroyo, for the Hickhill subdivision. But that was because, that was a partnership between DD five, DD six, and the city, so that's the only exception. Everything else is within the city, pretty much.
Luis, if you have a chance, call CD, uh, CSE and find out exactly where they stand on this, uh, Lozano Detention Pond, the, the study. And the reason I'm asking, all right, because, what was it, uh, March or April? We had requested that they start working on that particular area, because what we were looking at, and we means gave, uh, or Drainage District Number Five, some people from the EDC, to try to get drainage ditches and canals from that area all the way down to the Arroyo, okay? So it's something that should have been done. We, that was requested in March of April, right before the election. And then it was requested again November second, okay? Because this is one of the projects that I would like to present to the legislators, and see, we can retrieve funds to cover this particular area.
So CSE has a second task order already, and that task order entails the analysis that was requested by commission of using an irrigation ditch as a drainage ditch, if, if you recall.
Yeah, that's in the.
Yeah, so.
I just want to bring us back to item seven. Is there any other, um, just because, trying to save time here. Is there any other discussion on the item? I, those are all good points, Commissioner Morales, but is there any, any other questions regarding the item number seven for Luis? Because we can have you here all night and ask questions for you. Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry?
No vote for me.
Okay. Um, Mark, I, and I had just asked, uh, the Commissioner Lopez this. I, I noticed earlier there was a, at the planning and zoning, there was someone that abstained, and I didn't know who it was. But it's my understanding that the only way that a commissioner can abstain is if there is a conflict.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a choice to vote or not.
Correct, okay. So I would ask Commissioner Morales if you can vote on this, uh, agenda item.
I'm for it.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number eight, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution amending the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District Fund, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The DID is proposing an amendment to their fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, budget in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Uh, the increase to the expenditures will increase, um, the downtown decorations in the amount of nineteen thousand, two sixty-one. Uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for the improvement on the promo on the west side, and they are hiring, the remainder will be hiring a new employee at the Downtown Improvement District. Uh, staff recommends approval.
That employee's already been hired, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion? Wonderful, motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, item number nine, review of investment reports for the City of Harlingen for the quarter ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two, and for the year ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two.
It, it's the same period, once for the year and once for the quarter ending, but the numbers are going to be the same roughly. Uh, the investment report is, is presented to you here for your review. Uh, the important things to note are on page seven, where we have seventy-four million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars invested in either cash or, uh, local investment pools. Uh, the breakdown is ninety-five percent of our investments are in investment pools, and just under five percent are in cash. From that information, we are getting also a return from our local investment pools of two point four one three, and this is as of the end of September thirtieth. As of today, that, uh, rate has increased to four point one five percent. Uh, as the Fed increases their, uh, interest rates, our pools will also follow them. So we anticipate further increases in interest. Uh, our interest earnings has increased substantially over the current year, and we anticipate, uh, future gains, uh, for the current budgeted year. That is pretty much it.
Any discussion? Do you have a motion?
Second.
Wait, I don't know that we need.
Uh, no, that's just a presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten, public hearing to consider in ordinance on second and final reading redesigning the geographical boundaries of an enterprise zone pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter twenty-three oh three, and a tax reinvestment zone pursuant to Texas Code three twelve point two oh four and three twelve point eleven. Mark, were you gonna speak on?
Uh, I, I mean, I think we have, uh, basically, I thought this was a city manager item, but, uh, yeah. We, we had previously had a first reading, uh, uh, because basically, under the Texas Tax Code, you have to, um, you have to designate a Texas enterprise zone and a Texas tax zone under the government code. Uh, the city had done this quite a long time ago, I think it was ten years ago. Uh, but, uh, after ten years, it becomes stale and you have to re-designate again. So we're simply asking the city to re-designate the same area as a zone, so we can have qualified projects within that same zone.
Thank you.
So this is just housekeeping?
Yes, the city commission had previously designated this as an enterprise zone and a reinvestment zone a long time ago. But we, we have to re-designate the same zone in order to keep it, uh, active.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone he, to, here to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one here to speak, we will close the public hearing, and I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
Um, in ordinance of the City of Harlingen, uh, re-designating the geographic boundaries of an enterprise zone pursuant to Texas Government Codes, uh, twenty-three oh three, and a tax reinvestment zone pursuant to Texas Tax Code three one two two oh four and three one two point one one.
Is there a motion?
Sir, move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, consideration and possible action to approve the participation of the mayor and city commissioners in the twenty twenty-three It's Time Texas Community Challenge and execute a challenge pledge, Javier.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Commission, for the record, uh, my name is Javier Mendez, the Parks and Rec Director. Um, we're bringing this item to y'all to see if, um, if y'all would like to, for the city to participate in the It's Time Texas Community Challenge. Um, we've participated in the last, I'm gonna guess, six, seven years. Um, and so, except for, uh, the, the year where we had COVID, um, we didn't participate. But, um, we've, we've won, um, three years in a row when it first started. And so, um, we would like to participate this coming year. It's an eight-year, I mean, an eight-week challenge. Um, and so it starts, uh, January ninth. And so if we, if we, um, register or we pledge early, we get extra points. Um, so It's Time Texas, uh, group is, is asking whether we would want to participate in the, um, in the challenge.
Javier, what is the website where we go to register?
I'm sorry?
The, the website where you go to register to participate in the challenge?
So it'll be at Times Texas, uh, I think it's dot org.
I think it's in the bottom here, it says communitychallenge.com or ITT.
Yeah, so what I did was, um, all of it's online now. But what, um, they will allow us to do is, if y'all sign the pledges tonight, uh, we can take a picture. We submit those, and they'll entry y'all, uh, in it. So I bet you, Christina or Vai will take pictures of you, uh, while you sign or when you sign them. And we can upload those, um, to It's Time Texas, um, and it starts ninth and it ends March fifth.
So I encourage, um, everyone to sign the form that Javier has put at your, at your seat. So that way we can, we can do this. Are you participating?
Sure.
So what we would like to do, uh, mayor, um, we would like to have community events, um, so we can have, like, if we can kick it off with, with a walk with the mayor, um, we can select a date, and then we can have the community get together, and, um, we can also register those folks as well. But if we have an event with fifteen or more people, then we get those points as well.
Yeah, definitely. So I think we are all in. Commissioner Morales?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, wonderful. We're coming for the win, Javier, so lots of work. Do you want us here or stand up or?
Can we have everybody in front?
Okay.
And then just hold your forms so we can.
All this exercise.
We get points for this. We actually do.
Um, yeah, I think Javier can make sure that we upload these.
One other thing, mayor, if I'm, if I may, um, I want to announce the, um, the mayor's weight loss challenge. Um, so we would like to meet, um, thank you, uh, January twenty-third. Um, it's gonna be from four thirty to seven PM, and that's gonna be at the convention center. Um, and so that one, you will have to weigh in. And, um, I can't, I don't, I don't recall how long that challenge is gonna be. Um, but the goal is, of course, to lose.
Is that a public weigh-in?
I'm sorry?
Is that a public weigh-in?
And then we upload the weights.
Put it on a big screen. I'm gonna be out that week, clearly. I'm not gonna be able to make any events, all those.
It sounds like a public shaming.
I want to say that the, that the, um, the dates are, I know it starts after. Do you have the dates, Christina? It's January twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Through, I think it's, it's within the same, let me see.
I had to email.
I don't have that.
What did I do with it? Okay. Uh, it, the only thing I have is here is that we would do the challenge RGV onsite weigh-in, and it'll be scheduled for Monday, January twenty-third, uh, from four thirty to seven. Brazel's having theirs as well, I think it's, uh, a couple of weeks before.
Right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll get those, we'll get those dates and then have, uh, Christina circulate that.
I'm not subbing for you, by the way.
Information. So it is all confidential, um, you weigh in, and only you know, uh, what, what your, what your weight is.
Yeah, right.
And I, and I know, uh, know. Um, and so we are going to, to have a kickoff party, we'll, we'll put that information out, um, in, on the website, hopefully, and, and our social media platforms. And I encourage all of the commissioners to participate.
Are we gonna put some money?
And there's, there's prizes, right? I think, I don't, a couple thousand dollars, I think, is the winner.
Yeah, I don't know what the prize, I know that they are, um, offering prizes, and it's through the UT School of Public Health.
And it's an RGV challenge, so we want to, Harlingen, we want to ensure that Harlingen also outdoes the other, the other cities in all challenges. Okay. So we've done that. Is there anything else that we need to do on, on this?
That is, that's it.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. Okay. Item twelve, consideration and possible action to create an ad hoc committee to assist in the planning of city events. So this is a.
Excuse me, mayor?
I'm sorry.
I don't think we voted on the previous item.
Oh.
Uh, I think just.
Yes, you're right, okay, so we do need, it's an action item. Do we have a motion to?
Motion.
Participate?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So you heard that, Javier, they all agreed to participate. And all will agree to do a walk with their commissioner? Yes, wonderful. Um, okay, next is item twelve, consideration and possible action to create an ad hoc committee to assist in the planning of city events. So this will be, um, the idea behind this is it be a committee involving, uh, individuals within the city that are tasked with these events, and also including members of our community. And I'd ask each commis, commissioner to designate someone in their district to participate in the events that we're having. We got a lot of feedback, um, after Rio Fest on, uh, lots of positive feedback and other things on how we could improve, and, and, and I think it'd be good to have the perspective of our community in planning future events. Um, so I'd ask that.
So how many members are gonna be on this, on this committee?
So at least five residents, right, to represent the, the five districts? And then, um, I'm, I will appoint, um, as, as well. And then I, I think we talked about, I'd like to have Javier on, on this, um, committee, as well as Christina. So we'd have several people within the city, um, and then obviously, uh, CVB and downtown.
Get one pick.
We can have more.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just.
I, I don't think that we need to, to.
It's an ad hoc committee, mayor, so I don't think there's any formal process, you can add or.
Right, so I'm open to, I mean, I would ask that at least one member from each district to, to be able to represent the community.
The only thing we have to be on, on guard for is that if we do have a quorum of commissioners appointed, that we have to post them. And that might require some sort of.
Right, and, and I think that, um, Commissioner Bettis and I will take the, the, the lead on, on this, so that way we avoid any kind of quorums. And then if the commissioner wants to participate, then just shoot an email and make sure that we don't have, um, a quorum. So is there a motion?
Wait, 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 I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So is for, is this to help run and support existing events, or is this to create new events?
It's, it's both. It's, it's to talk about, um, we are going to be, we're working on, um, our certification to become a music city. So we're working on that, so there's gonna be new events that are coming in, in, because of that. And also, we just brought Rio Fest back, so even though it's, you know, we've had it for, for years and years, it's something new for the city. For the last fourteen, fifteen years, we have new, uh, individuals within the city that are gonna be helping on these events. So it's to help with the existing and then hopefully growing to see what the, what the needs, or what the city wants, what kind of events the city would like. Just like the sundown came out from a conversation that Commissioner Bettis, uh, started online, and, and there was a lot of support for that. And so to be able to do that and to have the community represented as best possible, I think would, we'd be able to do that by engaging the community and having someone from each district.
I just want to bring up my old friend, my concern about money, you know?
We'll, we'll be mindful of budgets, and, um, I've, 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 and I, and that's something that I do want to discuss and, and visit in the, for the next, and we don't have to do it right now, because it's, that's off-topic. But, um, for the events that we do have, and ensuring that we're getting the sponsorship for them, so that way we're not. And, and we'll make sure to, to do that, and definitely don't want to be wasteful and good stewards of our taxpayers.
I think the only change or ask out of one is that.
I think the only change, or ask out of one, is that whatever commissioner that the event's going to be in, I want that commissioner looped in on everything that's going on. So if it's going to be in District Five, well, Rini's already there, so that's perfect.
Right.
If it's going to be in District One or Two or whatever, then that commissioner should be looped in.
Great idea.
Yeah, definitely. So what we'll do is we'll just, you know, this will be like a mayoral, a mayor's committee, but Commissioner Bettis will assist with that. And then depending on it, then we'll shoot an email to say, okay, we're going to be talking about something in your district. And all commissioners are welcome to come to the meeting. I just know that I've utilized, you know, all of you for different things, and to be respectful of your time. But everyone will be welcome, as long as we are mindful of quorum.
I think that's perfect. If you shoot an email saying it's going to be in Ford's district, then Ford can show up and he gets that third slot or whatever.
Which is, which is great, yeah. So we can, and we can, we can iron those details out and then share it through Gabe on his memo. Any other discussion?
Just to point out, there's no fighting memos coming up in the next two weeks.
We know. You're already missed, Gabe. So is there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Okay, and board appointments? I don't know if anyone has any board appointments. Start with Commissioner Lopez.
Rini, do I have a board appointment?
Oh.
Not in your district.
Oh, for the.
For the teen advisory board.
I have a question about that, Gabe. We have, it can't be sixteen because.
Well, I think when the commissioner appointed that, they wanted to have someone that was at least seventeen, and the, just for the fact that they're closer to being an adult, I would imagine.
Okay.
Sixteen may be kind of young, I'm guessing, to be on that committee and.
The reason I ask is because there is an individual in your district.
Yeah, absolutely.
And she's, I'm actually, she's mentee of mine. She wants to be a lawyer, she's, wants to be on this board.
She's too smart to be a lawyer.
Hopefully, she's not watching this, and, but that's, so, and I talked to her about it, and then I was, and then I asked Commissioner Bettis, and we talked about it. So I don't know if there's some exception or.
We could, we'd have to change the, yeah, the ordinance that created the committee to change it to sixteen.
I would, I mean, I'll leave that up to the commission, and I know.
I'm sorry?
I said I'll leave that up to you. I know that you were the one with the vision, and then the student that you had that kind of brought this to life, so however, I just think that we might have more.
I am, I'm going to be honest, I'm having difficulty finding people with that age, with the age limitation, because like, for example. We can change the commissioner to sixteen if you'd like. We can put on the next agenda. Okay. That might give you more options as far as someone willing to serve on that committee.
Awesome.
Okay.
Yeah, because a lot of students graduate when they're seventeen, and so they're.
They gotta be really smart for that.
Well, no, I mean, back, like, I guess maybe now. I graduated at seventeen, but only because it was my birthday.
The age limit was, it was, right now, it's seventeen, eighteen to twenty. Right now, seventeen. Seventeen to twenty, what? Seventeen up to twenty-four. Twenty-four, right? That's what I thought it was.
So sixteen to.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-two? Okay. All right, so next meeting.
We can do that.
And so, no board appointments?
I'll take one here.
Okay.
For the Harlingen Teen and Youth Advisory Board, Christopher Bettis.
Okay, wonderful. None of them? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Now, item 14 is executive session, and I would ask that we don't need to consult on item 14A, but we do for 14B pursuant to Chapter 551, Subchapter D V T C A, Government Code, Section 551.087 regarding commercial and financial information from business prospects with which the board is conducting economic development negotiations and/or to discuss or deliberate financial or other incentives relating to Project SBI. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. And ladies and gentlemen, the time is now 7:07, and we are going to be in executive session, and we'll be out shortly. Thank you. Do you know?
She holds the minutes, right, but everything's recorded. Yeah.
The time is now 7:54, and we are out of executive session. And we have item 15, discussion and possible action on item 14 regarding the tennis pro contract and at the tennis center at Pendleton Park. We did not take this up in executive session. However, do we have any recommendation?
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Commission, over the last several months, issues of concern have arisen regarding the tennis pro contract. City staff has diligently attempted to work it out and resolve the issue, but has been unable to do so. The city has the right to terminate the contract with 30 days' notice, and it's a recommendation of legal counsel that the city provide 30 days' notice of termination on the tennis pro contract.
Is there any discussion?
So what's been going on?
Well, we've had staff talk to the tennis pro, and they talked about getting additional tournaments, but we haven't been able to get that. He's not there the entire time, and I think the issues that we've had, for also regarding the pro shop, it's now at bare minimum, there aren't really any items to purchase. And there was an issue that came up with some of the staff that he hired, personal issue, that gave us some concern. And so I think with those issues, we decided that this was the best course of action to take.
Can you, for those that are not fully aware of everything that's going on, can you kind of give us a synopsis, a little more in-depth synopsis, on the beginning?
Well, I'm not sure, as far as how much detail I can give you. Mark, can I talk about the personal issues that came up?
I prefer to do it the most general way possible, but yes.
Well, there were some issues that came to light that occurred regarding some of the staff that he had. And if that had happened, for any city staff, there would have been some disciplinary measures taken. He's not an employee, he's a contract labor, and so we felt that absent us being able to take any disciplinary action against him, the only measure we could take was just to terminate the contract. And so, that's probably as detailed as I can get regarding the personnel. The other issues that staff really had a concern about were, we need to get tournaments in that particular center. That's why we spent a lot of money on the HEB Tennis Center to try to get a place where people can go and buy some refreshments, perhaps some snacks. And we really haven't had, we've had a few, but not the detail that we have had in the past. And so, staff could not get any type of good direction from him as far as being able to get those. And so, we feel that we either, we can do that ourselves with our staff, or we can contract out for another pro to do that for us. But I think that needs to be a priority for whomever runs the center. We need to try to get more tournaments in that, attract more people into that center.
Yeah, it seems like the past, since I've gotten elected, this has become like a major sore point, right? Seems like you have these two factions that are going back and forth. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is. And both sides blame the other. The only thing that we need, that we know is that we're not getting the tournaments there that we need. We need to bring participation in that center up. And Craig has met with him quite a bit, and tried to get him to get tournaments there, but we keep getting resistance from doing that. And so, we're not really sure why. But I think at this point, we're at our, at our wit's end and say, it's time for a change, and so.
If we were to terminate this contract, would this gentleman still be able to go and hold lessons there and still be able to?
Yes.
Use the facility? So he can still use the facilities and all that?
He can still use the facilities, he just have to rent the courts, just like anybody else would. And he can still have lessons for all the people in the community that would like to use him. Any, either him or any member of his staff that he hired before can go in and use the facility, they would just have to rent them, just like anyone else would, right now. If he wants to get certain courts designated to him, that's something that the commission would have to do through a contract with him, or anybody else on that staff that he had before, so.
We've had issues with the other side of this, the other side of this equation as well, correct?
We've had.
The other faction, we've had issues with them as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I just, just a quick comment also. It seems like over the last few months, we've had a lot of, you know, members of the community come out on citizen communication and discuss, you know, kind of like pros and cons for the pro that we currently have, and then a prior, I guess subcontractor, I guess, if you will. And I want the community to know that we took into consideration everything that everyone said and came to share with us. And I really think it's an unfortunate situation. It appears that both of these individuals did really good work at the tennis center, and there's kids, adults, from all ages, and medical students, and different individuals from the community that have really taken advantage of the tennis center, and have found it to be an affordable place to learn and grow, and even, you know, consider going into college and things of that nature. And I wish that we could have continued down that path, but it seems that over the last few months, there has been no reasonable productive discussion on coming up with a solution to have these individuals to continue on with the facility. Would that be accurate?
Yes, Mayor, and one thing to also keep in mind is that we've had a lot of people come up in public comments, and almost all of them have had issues with the tennis center, either with the way it's been right now, or with some of the staff, there are a lot to be there. And so, no one has come up to us and said, hey, I wouldn't change a thing about the tennis center. If they had, that'd be a different story.
Yeah, I agree. And it seems that this community center has become more about the contractors that we have, and not about the community itself, and the people that we serve. And so, we want to continue to provide the space, and through our parks and rec, I know Javier will ensure that it is still available to the community, and we'll do everything that we can to ensure that we can provide, if that's what we need to do, a pro to run the facility or our staff. But we still want to be able to be there for the community. We want these individuals to still participate and use the courts. We just, you know, and this isn't about, you know, I think you said, two different individuals or factions. It's not about taking one side over the other. It's really about what's best for the community and the resources of city management. When we, as a city, put a city property in the hands of a private individual, we expect them to behave in a certain, in a certain way, and we have expectations for them to put the community first. And at the mo, when that isn't done anymore, it no longer serves the city. Is that, would you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So with, that's all I have to say really on this topic. I don't know if anyone else has.
Who from the board has a child who's like, who from over there, actually, who's the president of the board?
I appreciate the comments, but only during citizen communication can we have any discussion. So I'm happy to discuss with you after the commission meeting, if you'd like to talk, but we do have to move forward, and if there's no other discussion, then I'd ask the commission if there's a motion. Because you need action, right?
Yes, we need a motion by the commission.
I'll make a motion to accept our attorney, Mark Saucy's advice.
I think the motion should be to give notice, if that's what you want, Commissioner. The motion would be to give contract notice, 30 days' notice of termination of contract as provided by the contract itself.
Okay, I'll make a motion to provide 30 days' notice of contract as provided in the contract for a 30-day.
Is there?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you. And. Item 17, consideration and possible action to approve a full-time tennis pro position and two part-time clerk positions to the 2023 budget to manage and operate the HEB Tennis Center at Pendleton Park.
Ma'am, I think you skipped 16.
Item number 16, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over one. Let me just, thank you, Commissioner. Item 15, no, 16, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading and amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, establishing the rental fees for the HEB Tennis Center, and Javier?
Yes, ma'am. For the record, my name is Javier Mendez, I'm the Parks and Rec Director. And on, in your agenda and the executive summary, we do have some recommendations. What we did do is we did do some research. We called other cities, there's not very many that have a tennis center, if you will, that operate through the city. Some of them are either private. The only ones that we were able to get information from was Brownsville, there's one in Mission, and then Corpus Christi. And so, what we did do is we compared their fees to what we have now, and so we came up with a recommendation. And the, it's attached to, or it's part of the executive summary, and I'll read it out. So for memberships, adult annual is $200 per year, adult semi-annual is $125 for six months, youth annual is $100 per year, youth semi-annual is $60 per six months. The family annual membership is $300 per year, and then the family semi-annual is $160 for six months. And then we had a court fee, which was open play for adults, is $3, and I believe it was up to two hours, yes, two hours. And then we had open play for youth, which is $2 for up to two hours. And then, as a facility rental, we had a tournament fee for full day was $200 for up to 12 courts, and a tournament fee for half a day is $100 for half a day up to 12 courts. And then if somebody wanted to provide private lessons or group lessons, it was going to be $12 per court per day.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion? Or, wait, we have to have the, this is an ordinance, right? So then, Mark, you have to read the caption.
I do not have a copy of that, item 16, in my bag. In ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas, amending Exhibit A of ordinance number 18-28, and amending Chapter 18 Master Fee Schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing fees for certain licenses, permits, and other services provided by the City of Harlingen, amending Chapter 36 Parks and Recreation, providing for publication, and ordaining other matters pertaining to the foregoing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post? Motion carries. And now, item seventeen, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve a Full-Time Tennis Pro Position and Two Part-Time Clerk Positions to the 2023 Budget to Manage and Operate the HEB Tennis Center at the Pendleton Park.
Mr. Mayor, City Commission, again, my name is Javier Mendez, Parks and Rec Director. Um, and the executive summary, we, um, we estimated if we did hire a, um, a tennis pro that would run the facility at a base salary of $38,000, um, with benefits of $24,000 and $61, we would have a, it'd be a total of $62,000 and $61 for the salary for a tennis pro. And then we would ask for two per, uh, part-time clerks to assist with the, um, with the operation, collecting the, the fees, um, and being there at the pro shop. Um, and that would be $10 an hour with benefits. Uh, it comes out to $15, I mean, $15,202 per year. Uh, that's, um, so we, it'd be a total, um, for all three employees would be $92,465, um, asking for those three positions.
Question?
Yes, sir.
These would be city employees or contract?
Yes, sir. They would be city employees.
Okay. And they would be on their parks department?
Yes, sir.
Yes. We want to try this for a while, see if it works out. If it doesn't work out, then we'll come back and with some alter-, uh, alternative suggestions. Um, I apologize, none of these two executive sessions, uh, executive summaries made it into your packet. Uh, we did have them, uh, for discussion at the staff meeting. And I, I actually looked at both of those. And I'm not sure what happened between then and getting them into your packet. But we'll make sure that, uh, at least the ordinance for the fees, uh, will be in your packet so you can have a closer look at them for, for the next meeting.
I don't know what the going salary is for a pro. I don't, I guess, is that something that you looked into? If you feel that that is going to get you a quality candidate to come in and?
Well, I'm not sure. Um, because I, I called Brownsville because they're the only one, the closest one that has a, um, a pro shop. And they do have a tennis pro, uh, but they wouldn't share what they paid that person. Um, Mission does not have one, so they, they go directly to the Parks and Rec if they want to rent the facility or if they want to, um, do lessons. Um, and Corpus Christi is, it's a, it's a big facility. Um, and he gets paid very well.
Like he said it very well.
I, I mean, thirty...
Not coming to Harlingen.
I mean, $38,000, I mean, isn't that food stamps money?
No, I heard him say sixty...
Well, that's everything with the benefits.
Right. The benefits would be $62,000, but his base salary would be 38.
Correct.
Yeah. So, do you need time to, I just don't know...
Thirty-eight sounds...
I don't know.
I mean, we, we gave our truck drivers a pay raise and they're making...
They're, they're $19 an hour.
Yeah. So call it twenty, they're making $40,000.
So maybe one of the considerations is, um, aside from their salary, is that we share the, uh, lessons. Um, so whatever they're teaching, um, is we share that...
Like a profit share?
The profit share. Um...
We, we do that with the golf pro, so...
Okay.
Okay, so it's thirty-eight base, but if, if they're, if they're doing...
Golf, tennis lessons.
Lessons and whatnots, then it's a profit sharing.
I think that gives you more room to get someone better, right? What do you think?
I think it's an incentive also for them to go out and market or promote.
Can we, can we go to forty?
Forty?
Minimum of forty.
Okay.
We, we can do that.
I mean, you know, when, I mean, thirty, you know, you can make it 39,999. It still is in the thirties. But if you make it forty, it's in the forties.
But we can do that if you, you'd like.
I, is it possible to give, uh, do we have to decide on a figure right now? Or can you give Javier some?
A range?
Room, a, a range to, to work with and then to kind of, we're just moving very quickly, but to be able to, to make sure that...
We can, but you'd have to give us a range that you feel comfortable going with.
Minimum forty.
Thirty-eight to forty, is that?
No, minimum forty.
Minimum forty?
Can, uh, anybody who sees this is going to go with a top number that, on the range? So...
But, but we, that's true. That's very true. But, uh, because all our salary ra-, uh, job descriptions have ranges. But, uh, we normally start at the entry level unless there's some sort of, uh, outstanding circumstance that we feel the candidate is, uh, well-qualified and we need to get him. So we'll make, uh, we'll make accommodations for that.
Could we do it like based on, on how much we, um, the golf pro? Like, could it be similar or it's not?
I don't know what the golf pro is of hand.
The golf pro is a much larger facility.
So he gets paid more?
And he's got staff of twenty plus.
Yeah, I think, I think he's over 50.
Are we in the middle of a stabbing study right now? Cat stabbing compensation study?
Well, we are, but it's not going to have that because that, that position was not a city employee position.
Right. But they would already have the data available.
Not for a tennis pro, no.
Anywhere, for any city?
No, because they're only doing it on Harlingen. So that, that information for a tennis pro is not going to be anywhere in their study.
No, but I, I guess what he's trying to get to, this is my understanding, is, uh, they would have an idea from another city. Correct.
Oh, I can...
Part of Texas or wherever.
I, I'll have to ask them to see what they have, but it won't be in the study they give us.
No.
But yeah, but I can ask them. I can ask them.
This way we'll have an idea.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're, and then we have tournaments that hopefully they can bring in and then they can get part of that as far as an incentive.
Well, the tur-, the, the, uh, the added incentive would be from tennis lessons, not necessarily from a tennis tournament.
Right.
The ideas sound, ask them.
We can do that.
Please.
Do you want us to go with whatever figure they give us?
Yeah, we leave that to you and Craig and Javier's discretion.
Okay.
Uh, and then as it relates to the two part-timers, I'd like the emphasis to be on high school students. We had a bunch of kids from Harlingen High and Harlingen South that were phenomenal tennis players.
Agreed.
And I want to make sure that we give them the primary, uh, the priority in hiring.
Um, there's quite a few students that are there now. I don't know what the arrangements are, uh, with the current tennis pro, but they're at the center behind the counter. So we can do that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I'll, I'm, I'll make a motion, um, to, to approve a full-time tennis pro position and two part-time clerk positions to the 2023 budget to manage and operate the HEB Tennis Center at Pendleton Park with a, a range, a salary range, starting at $40,000 for, uh, city management to negotiate.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, Consideration and Possible Action on Item Number Fourteen B as discussed in executive session. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Motion to proceed as discussed as, uh, in executive session.
Do the second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Alrighty, ladies and gentlemen, that is, um, the end of our meeting. And we are now adjourned. Thank you very much.